All right. It is about 8:33 in the morning, and we'll go ahead and get started for those of you concerned that either you're at the wrong meeting or I'm at the wrong meeting. This is the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting. Chair Bolter is ill today. No, you're not excused. So I am stepping in to chair this meeting. So I'll go ahead and call to order and ask that there be a roll call taken.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Antor.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Bulkowski.
Present.
Burl.
Here.
Green. Commissioner Green. Commissioners Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
LaGrande.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioners Ponstein. Commissioner Ponstein. Commissioners Skaggs.
Here.
Sparks.
Hudson.
Vice Chair Steck.
Here.
Commissioners Teal.
Here.
Womack. Commissioner Womack. Commissioner Woodin.
Here.
Chair Bolter. Chair Bolter. Mr. Chair, you have 14 members present, five absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. I will then go ahead and call on Commissioner Jones for the invocation.
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we have special intentions for you this morning as we pray for everyone in the community who is struggling with loss. We ask that you hold Commissioner Womack, colleague Al Vandenberg, and their families tight in your arms. In high school, you taught me a lesson that prayer can be heard in music, and we focus in prayer now on the words of Lauren Dangle. "You say I am loved when I can't feel a thing. You say I am strong when I think I am weak. And you say I am held when I am falling short. When I don't belong, oh, you say I am yours, and I believe." Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, let's move to the next item, item 5, which is the Special Order of Business,
and we have with us Mr. Lance Werner. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
From the Kent District Library.
I always follow Shirley.
Oh, all right. Is there a mic that's closer? Good morning. I've been called worse.
And county commissioners. I'm Shirley Burisma, here at District Library, and this is my second year. But anyway, lots of new faces here since I left. We've got the new folks and to meet you. At KDO, they want a fantastic staff. And was able to fill in.
Thank you, Shirley. Can you hear me?
We can.
It's so good to be here with you all today, and we so appreciate your support. And 2020 was a difficult year for us, and I know it was a difficult year for you, too. And I want to take a moment and thank everybody here for your service. I think that, you know, being in a leadership position during difficult times really is a true measure of your personality and your character, and I so appreciate the county commission. I know it's been tough. It was tough on us, too. When the governor shut us down, you know, we still had to stay busy and stay focused, and so we caught up on our training and we weeded our collections. But we also did a number of online programs, and we had virtual programs, and we had almost half a million people tune in because we recognized that a lot of kids were home. We wanted to keep up our early literacy efforts, and so we had great attendance virtually on our programs. We have procured through federal grants 1,300 Wi-Fi hotspots, and we've had those deployed. You know, we recognized in 2020 and even in 2021 that a lot of kids are still went to school virtually and are still going to school virtually, and a lot of people don't have access. And so we have really focused in on areas that are quote-unquote broadband deserts and where people don't have access. We want to make sure that people can utilize the library collection, but also kind of, you know, access to the Internet's really become, you know, kind of a necessity for a lot of people. We want to make sure that we can get people what they need to be successful in life, you know, to apply for benefits, apply for jobs, and so on and so forth. During 2020, we've had a longstanding relationship with Feeding America to deal with summer food insecurity, but during 2020, it was just food insecurity. So we worked with Feeding America to deliver meals, and that was a great success, and we've rolled that program out even more widely. I'm happy to say that our electronic circulation unsurprisingly went up in 2020 over 30%. And our services for the library for the blind and physically handicapped went up almost 40%, 38 or 36 or 38% in fact. So we're really glad to provide that service as well. And we've hit the ground running in 2021, and we are busy trying to work more closely to the schools and to make sure that we don't leave anybody behind. It's such a great honor to serve Kent County and the people who live in Kent County, and we are committed to being a cornerstone of the county. And again, I just want to take a moment and thank all of you for your service because I know these have been some of the toughest times of all of our careers. So thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Good, thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Bulkowski.
Thank you, substitute chair. Welcome, Lance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are you going to ask the question?
I'm going to ask the question. In all of your free time during COVID, did you all work on communications and a single catalog with Grand Rapids Public Library?
You know, we had a project with Grand Rapids Public Library that was they pulled out of, and that's the only thing that really happened in 2020. We had we've worked with them on Mission Read, and Mission Read is an early childhood literacy program that was a countywide program, and all of our partners kind of fell away on that one. So it's just us now, and so we were disappointed about that, but we continue to try to make inroads there. But it is what it is. So we'll keep trying.
All right.
But it takes two to dance unless you're just, you know, you could be relieved by yourself, but.
Well, excellent. You know, again, anything a Grand Rapids resident can do to help because
Thank you, sir.
One catalog would make a lot of sense for those of us that use the library. A nit question. I understand if there's one book in the library, and I go to get that book, I have to wait my turn, and I put a hold in, and I wait for it to come back. But with COVID, I'm reading on my phone too much, and so electronically, why do I need to get a hold? I mean, I just download. It's, you know, Al sends us a memo, and we all get it. We had, you know, 21 copies instantaneously, but a book, I have to put a hold on an electronic book?
Sure. It's a really great question, and it kind of defies logic, and it does defy logic. And I'll tell you why it is the way it is. And first of all, there's no such thing as reading too many books on your phone. I just want to go on record and say that. That's a scientific fact.
I mean, I prefer the hard copies.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the reason it is the way it is is because of licensing agreements. I mean, technologically, it's certainly doable, but because the license agreement restricts our access and the access we can offer our patrons, that's why you have to get on a holds list. So we buy, when you buy a title virtually, you're really buying an access to a particular title. You're not actually buying a thing. It's just, it's kind of ethereal. And so license agreements put those restrictions into place, and that's why it's kind of confounding. Now, if you were to access our magazine database, on Zineo, I believe, there's unlimited access. I mean, all of our residents in Kent County, all, you know, 400-plus thousand residents could access the same title at the same time, no problem, certainly doable. But there's no license agreement there that prevents doing that. And so it's just what the publishing houses do to make revenue. I can't hold that against them, but it is a little confounding and at times frustrating.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I saw, I think, last week news report. I believe it was on WoodTV, some controversy down in the Byron Center branch. Now, given it was on woodtv.com, I'm sure you were all misquoted. But I guess my question is, you know, I think there's certainly a difference between, you know, materials, books, et cetera, that have a right to exist, you know, under First Amendment, et cetera, versus what public taxpayer dollars go to in the library system. But what is kind of the balancing act? How do you police that? How do you, what's the policy? How do you decide what content makes it into the libraries?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, I mean, we have to acknowledge we live in a diverse society, so we have diverse materials. I mean, so we have to have something for everyone. That's our call to action. We are actually changing up our collection. And before, you know, up to this point, we have been just making a diverse collection, so popular materials collection, so it's not a deep research collection. So that was kind of what drove our purchasing. We buy off of lists and, you know, buy things that are recommended. We are changing our, we are changing our collection development policy. It's going to be driven much more by usage of materials in a particular location. So if, say, in East Grand Rapids, you know, let's say, and this is just hypothetical, not actual, let's say people in East Grand Rapids were wild and crazy about mysteries and checked out a bunch of mysteries then, because of their usage, you will see more mysteries because we're purchasing more mysteries for East Grand Rapids. And that's going to be true in every one of our branches. And so the nice thing about that is that the branch really does reflect the community's interest and the community's values because everything that we're doing is going to be driven by usage of the resource. And so that's very exciting. But at the end of the day, we will always stand for freedom. We have a duty as professionals and a duty as Americans to support the Constitution. We don't support it sometimes. We support it all the time, and that is an argument we'll always have. And it's just, it's important. I think if we want freedom tomorrow, we have to fight for freedom today. And all of us feel that way at the Kent District Library, so that's why things are the way they are.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, substitute chair. Lance, I have been involved in government in one way or another since 2004, been listening to KDL updates, what seems to be a long time now. Thank you so much for your time and the efforts you have put forth to make KDL a phenomenal resource in our community. The question that I have for you is you are supported by a millage, and I was curious if you could just give us a handful of highlights of where some of those funds have gone for projects.
Sure. You know, so we actually have two new branches since the last millage that we passed. We have the Amy Van Nando Branch, which is a lovely facility in Ada, which was actually paid for with private donations, but we are responsible for providing everything in the branch. And then we have our branch at the Kelloggsville High School. And so, again, we have to outfit those spaces and provide technology and provide materials. We have really made a huge investment into technology and build a very big, robust infrastructure to enable us to continue to offer e-services to people because that is an area that keeps growing. Our actually, our labor costs are actually very flat. They're good. I believe we are floating around, we just got done with our, doing our budget for 2022, and I think they're going to come in about 57%. Normally, libraries come in about 70%. So we're spending a lot of money on materials. We're spending a lot of money on programs. We're spending a lot of money on technology, and we have two additional branches and the Bookmobile. And basically, what we like to do is transform lives and make people happy.
Thank you. Keep up the good work, Lance.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, Lance, thank you. I still have to blame you for the fact that my commute time is longer now with the onset of audiobooks. I'm known to be sitting in my parking ramp for a period of time, so.
I don't judge. Listen, we love all of you. God bless you. And again, thank you for your service, and we're proud to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move to the next item, which is public comment, opportunity to address the Board of Commissioners on a matter that is before us on the agenda today. You have up to three minutes if you would identify yourself with your name and your address. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address us on an agenda item? If not, I do not see anyone. We will move to the next item, which is the consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I move the consent agenda. Support.
It is moved and supported. Any discussion? If not, will you proceed to take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Substitute Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrande.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan. Ponstein.
Here. Or yes, I'm sorry.
Yep, I got you. Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We will move to item 8A on our agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Woodin.
I'm going to be a good brown oster and just say, thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move Resolution 102 of today's date. It is an agricultural preservation budget amendment for Sarecki Farm. It comes to us from Fiscal Services.
Is there support? It is supported. Discussion? I see no discussion. All right, will you proceed to take the roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 102, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Burl. Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman. LaGrande.
Yes.
McLeod. Morgan. Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 15 yeas, two nays. The motion passes. Resolution 102 is adopted.
Thank you. We will move to item 8C, and I'm, 8B, excuse me, I'm going ahead of myself, 8B, and again, call on Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. I move adoption of Resolution 103 of today's date. It is to accept a safety or a planning grant from the Michigan Office of Highway Safety. It comes to us from the 63rd District Court.
Support.
Moved and supported. Discussion? Yes, Commissioner LaGrande.
I just want to express my enthusiasm for this sort of activity. I think every time that we can divert offenders into a rehabilitation court, it's a win for society, for them, for us. So I'm just excited about this. Thank you.
Thank you. If no other comments, Madam Clerk, will you take the roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 103, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrande.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan. Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 103 is adopted.
Thank you. Now we will move to 8C, and I will call on Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move today's date, 104, 2021, appropriate report from the Equalization Department. Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Bulkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I see Matt here, and I was so quiet last Tuesday, I thought I'd quick make up for it. Speaking of questions I have with regularity, the chart that's on, I believe that's a 35 of 73, that's like your first major chart. Do you ever publish the taxable value per capita in the taxing jurisdiction? Because in a lot of ways, you know, to me, that's kind of a good measure of what a community can do with certain tax levels since most of our taxes are property taxes. What is, what is that opportunity?
Yeah. I think we've done that on an ad hoc basis in the past. I can certainly rerun those numbers. I just don't have it right off the top of my head right now, but we have done that in the past, and, you know, what you're getting at is we look at things at the parcel level or at the dollar level, right? And looking at that as a per capita basis, you know, converts that to looking at the dollars per person. So we can certainly update that for you and send that along to the administrators.
Right, right. Well, and a lot of it is the, for a jurisdiction, city of Grand Rapids, you know, five, over $5 billion taxable value, it's like, whoa, you know, we, we outpace all other jurisdictions, but at the same time, what is our taxable rate needed to have the same investment per capita as some of the other communities that have much lower populations? So it is a, you know, again, what is, what is that equity around the county? So just, I mean, and no need to do it anytime soon. It's just a note for next year's go around. Just a quick extra column in the Excel spreadsheet would be awesome. But again, no need anytime soon. Thank you.
Commissioner LaGrande.
I just want, I'm asking a question from page 37 where you have the, some ISDs listed there, and are we just, we're just comparing ourselves to those other ones? Is that what's going on there? Or are there somehow?
Yeah, this entire, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, this entire thing is simply to show you all of the taxing authorities that are collected in any of the jurisdictions in Kent County, so where there's some overlap. ISD boundaries don't necessarily overlap, and this shows you sort of an example of the history of levies on page 37. So in the elegant ISD, you can sort of see the operating, the special education, and the various ones.
Does that mean that there are school districts that overlap into our county? Or am I, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just a little confused by that.
Yeah, they're, so the government unit boundaries, like the cities and townships, those are very discreet. The school district boundaries overlap into other counties, and if those school districts are associated with different ISDs, then those ISDs are levied in those school districts, and that's why they're included.
Interesting. Thank you. Okay, so I.
So there's overlaps.
There's overlaps. So I thought Kent ISD was Kent County, and that is not 100% true.
Right, no, that is, that is not the case.
I learned something new. Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Chair. Matt, thank you for this very comprehensive report. A lot of times when I get stuff like this, I look at it, you know, make sure I recycle it properly, but this is something I think we should all hang on to as a sense of direction of where we've been, where we're going, and so on and so forth. Very nice report. Can you tell us where we're at in regards to housing starts? Do you have any feel for where we're at right now as opposed to a year ago? And it may be in here somehow, but if we were on a curve right now, are we still at the apex, or are we starting to trend downward a little bit? Or we still have any feel for that at all?
Well, in terms of housing supply, Kent County is not unlike a lot of other places in that there's a shortage of housing. For a long time, new construction, housing starts were pretty flat. Essentially, in the construction industry, the profit margins and affordability are only at the higher level, so that's been constrained. That has a, that creates a problem with more affordable housing. And of course, since the residential market has been appreciating so rapidly, especially during the pandemic, there's going to be a constraint on supply for some time. We do see areas of growth along the South Corridor, Gaines, Byron, those are the real growth areas, and then in some of the, some of the outer suburbs, we're starting to see an uptick where people are starting to reenter into there. I don't have any numbers per se, but we do receive sort of a building permit quarterly report that I can forward to Al and he could.
Oh, it's not necessary. I was just wondering what your gut feeling is because I hear different things. We're starting to maybe crest a little bit, and, you know, it seems like, you know, if history is any indication that we're getting close to like a bubble where it's going to, you know, whether it's a financial bubble or whatever, but it's driven right now by need and commerce, and so it's a good thing. I've never seen anything like this in my lifetime, and it seems unprecedented, and I'm just wondering if there's any indicators thinking we're going to slow down anytime quick.
Yeah, so many things, especially during 2020, have seemed somewhat counterintuitive, right? But really, the larger thing that's happening is that you have a lot of the millennials that have delayed household formation, and there's just so much demand. that have delayed household formation, and there's just so much demand as they form their households that we're going to have a limited supply into the near future. And so underlying, underlying the sort of shifts in the rapid appreciation is a demographic bubble where you have boomers downsizing, millennials entering into the household formation stage. And until that wave really recedes, you're going to see essentially the same forces of supply and demand at work, and we continue to see that in the sales that we're doing.
Well, I appreciate, and I really do appreciate this report. That's well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm going to start mumbling probably the wrong terms here. So is it Proposal A that limits the taxable amount to inflation? And if that's right, then is that the CPI that's... And will that then, next year, will we see kind of a uncapping a little bit, given how high the CPI is going to be for 2021?
So yes, Proposal A is the constitutional amendment that was passed in ninety-four that limits the taxable value to the CPI or five percent, whichever is less. Okay, so we have a preliminary indication. It's not official from the state yet. The CPI that's going to be used for the calculation of taxable value in 2022 is going to be three point three percent. Now, that might sound low when you're, especially when you're hearing some of the contemporary things about some of the food items and the household items that are going up faster than that. The particular bundle of indexes that the state relies on has been, and it goes from, it ends on September thirtieth. So we kind of have a preliminary indication of what that's going to be. So anything that happened after September thirtieth is not going to be in the calculation for 2022. Next year, it'll be three point three. So if you haven't sold your house and you're going to be staying in there, your assessed value will go up quite a bit, I can assure you. And your CPI and your taxable value will be limited to three point three unless you add any physical additions to the property.
All right, any other discussion? Any other comments, questions? If not, Madam Clerk, will you take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 104, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy. Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrande. McLeod. Morgan. Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter. Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 104 is adopted.
Thank you. Next item is public comment on any matters related to the jurisdiction of the county. So if there's anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission, you may do so. Please identify yourself with your name and address, or do we use cards? All right, so I don't know if we use...
I have no cards, Mr. Chair.
All right, well, maybe there's no comments, but we'll see. If anyone from the public does wish to address us, please identify yourself by your name and your address, and you have up to three minutes. Good morning.
My name is Diane. I live in Kent County. I just want to point out to the board that it's been twenty-eight days, twenty-eight days, since the county has been accepting money unlawfully. I know there were discussions on the whole health order that's in place, and this is regards to the budget bill. It was determined that, well, we don't think we're going to be in trouble having this, you know, in place. So I just wonder, were there any discussions of, are we going to go ahead and take this money knowing that the budget bill says we can't have this public health order in place? How principled is this board? Just seems that that item within the budget bill that got passed and signed into law, the governor could have asked the Supreme Court for their opinion on the matter before she signed it. She didn't do that. And it's, yeah, it's just a matter of how principled is the board? And I guess I would just like to see public, open, public discussion about whether you feel it's right to accept the money, knowing that you're not obeying the law as it was passed. I guess that's all I have to say for right now.
Great, thank you, Diane. Anyone else? All right. If not, we'll move to item ten, which is a proposed closed session, and I will call on Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. Steck, I move to meet in closed session pursuant to Section eight E to consult with legal counsel regarding litigation on, or pending, or settlement strategy in connection with the pending litigation as an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigation or settlement position of the county.
Is there support?
Support.
It is supported. Discussion? Not all those that's... Is it a roll call?
It is a roll call.
I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, one more.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt, on the, a motion to move into closed session, Commissioners Antor. Breevy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Burl. Green. Hennessy. Jones.
Yes.
Coleman. LaGrande.
Yes.
McLeod. Morgan. Ponstein. Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden. Chair Bolter. Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. This body moves into a closed session.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to call us back to order in open session and continue on with our agenda. The next item, number eleven, and I will call on Commissioner Breevy for a motion relative to potential settlement.
Thank you, Chair. Steck, I move Resolution 105 of today's date, potential settlement of pending litigation.
Report. Commissioner Burl, supported. So any further discussion? Obviously, we had a lot of discussion in closed session. Not, is this a roll call?
Yes.
It is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 105, Commissioners Antor. Breevy.
Yes.
Bolkowski. Burl.
Yes.
Green. Hennessy. Jones.
Yes.
Coleman. LaGrande.
Yes.
McLeod. Morgan. Ponstein. Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have sixteen yeas, zero nays, one abstention. You have, or the motion passes. Resolution 105 is adopted.
Great, thank you. Let's move to item number twelve. Administrators, report.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief today here. If you could take one and pass it down. This is a communication tool that I've used as far back as South Haven City. When I worked as South Haven City Manager and Ottawa County Administrator, it's the County Administrator's Digest. My goal is to get this out every week. Sometimes oppressive business or issues may dictate otherwise, but that'll be how we try to do it. We will set it up with links, so this could be cut and pasted into other communications you might like to use. And we realize that we do have more, we're working on a communication plan. Lori updated the group this morning. And then, but this is a tool I've always used. It's just for me to the board, but I also send it to all county employees, and I send it to local units of government. Ultimately, we'll send it to a large list of stakeholders as it grows in distribution. So that's all for today.
All right, thank you. Al, let's move to the next item, which is reports. Do any commissioners have reports? Nobody dares give a report at ten thirty in the morning. I'm not saying you have to, but...
Maybe you could get together and do a dual one if you're really...
Maybe. So let's try Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. The governing board of the Kent County Community Action Agency met on Tuesday. It was Monday, Monday, forgive me. A few items to report. First, seventeen million of the CIRA dollars, the Rent Assistance Funds that were passed through the CARES Act have been spent down. They've reached their sixty-five percent threshold by the allotted time, so that'll ensure that they get a second round, an increased, or an increase in their second round in CIRA II. That'll be close to ten million dollars, and the CIRA I fund will have until June of 2022 to finally spend down. And then second, two actions were taken to expand availability of financing for moderate home rehabilitation for low-income families. And that is the conclusion of my report.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. Steck, I just have a brief update from the Department of Public Works. Next week, Thursday, we have our monthly board meeting, and it's at eight thirty at 1500 Scribner, which is the Road Commission Building. And we will be joined by representatives from our finalists, which would be Continuous and Energia. And they will also be doing a presentation about their proposed project. So if you'd like to hear more about that and hear directly from James and Yaniv from Continuous and Energia, they would welcome that, and I would welcome you to see what one of our meetings is like. So it's at eight thirty next week, Thursday, 1500 Scribner. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll move to miscellaneous. If anyone has any miscellaneous items, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to give my condolences to Al. I know we spoke a little bit, but on behalf of this board, I know how tough it is to lose a parent. And it sounds like your dad had a great run. And I was so happy to hear that he's out of pain and he's with his Lord and Savior, which is the best we can all do. And also to Robert Womack, my friend, who lost his cousin tragically. Robert's been through way too much of this with both friends and family over the years. And I know how tough it is, and I know how much she cares, and it's just really, really difficult, Robert. I know she was an amazing girl from everything I read about her, and my condolences, and I'm sure of the boards.
The other miscellaneous. Commissioner Ponstein.
I'll make up for my lack of reports. So I want to echo Commissioner Antor to Commissioner Womack. You know, I could, I can't put myself in your shoes, but what, the one thing I admire most about you is that you've taken a devastating event for your family and you're using it to outreach to the community and to other families and try to find somehow to stop the violence. So I appreciate your work on that. Second of all, you know, public comment, this question gets asked about every single time, and I think the commissioners need an update on it, and certainly the public needs an update on it, on whether what we did by accepting the healthcare dollars was legal or not. I know our legal opinions have said that it was, but there's other counties that have taken, and have there been any other court cases or any other path that this is taking that we should be made aware of now of what we did, whether it's legal or not? Second, when I was sitting in traffic because of an accident, if people are worried whether we're getting back to normal, I think the traffic volume is normal, and when in accidents, no fun. But I went through a construction zone, which I believe is for the proposed new complex that may or may not have an amphitheater. The county commissions could get an update on what the status is of that, because I think a lot of people feel that that amphitheater is going to be built. They're going to use our credit rating in order to do that, and I don't remember ever agreeing to any of that. So an update on where we are as of today would be great. And then, second of all, during my wait in the car, I got not, not a chance to listen to audiobook, but all the advertisements that are on the radio, besides the one about sports gaming, that seems to be every other one. There's a ongoing one, and maybe the clerk's office can respond to this, of this new fear that we should have that someone can get a title to our house by simply going to a clerk's office, filing something, signing something that said that I signed it over to them. Could we get an update of what Michigan, the state of Michigan, does to protect that to not happen? Because I'm actually getting calls on this that people feel and are in fear that if they don't get this insurance, their house could be taken away from them. So if we could get maybe a public service announcement on that advertisement, I know it runs day and night on TV, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Womack.
Yes. I want to thank Commissioner Altor and Commissioner Pointstein and all the other commissioners that reached out during my family's time of need. Just want to thank the sheriff and also our county clerk just for their support. Just very proud of law enforcement, the way they supported my family, and being able to be amongst my family while they were going through their grief. And if I had to text back our county clerk or some, or one of our Democratic Caucus members, you know, thanking them for appreciation, or our sheriff, our police chiefs throughout the county. And my family would be like, who are these people, you know? They wanted us to, me to read off some of the pieces of the statements of support for them. And I said, it just made me feel good to know after five years here going on six that I was able to tell my family, yes, I'm proud to be part of another family, too. It's called Kent County. So just wanted to thank you all.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? All right, if not, again, I will join in with my colleagues in expressing our concern, our thoughts and prayers for the Womack family and their loss, as well as to our administrator, Al, and the loss of his father. Also, remind everyone that the meeting next week is an evening meeting. I think it is our last evening meeting of this session, so don't show up at eight thirty in the morning. And so we'll follow up with that. And then last, I did have a little chance to check the standing rules. I could not find the term substitute chair anywhere in there.
I acknowledged you as chair.
Yes, you did.
I want you to say, I got it correct.
So we'll make a note for the next standing rule revisions to see if we want to put that term in there, so.
Thank you, Your Honor.
With that, I will call on Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adjourn subject to the call of the chair to Thursday, November fourth, 2021, at six P.M. for an official meeting.
Supported, all in favor, say yes. Yes, we are adjourned.